Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the May 21st meeting to order. And I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Swillen.
Trustee Saturn.
Well, personal, present.
Trustee Narodowski. Trustee Ingraffia.
Present.
And Trustee Kenley?
Keenly.
Keenly.
Present.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Thank you, present. Okay, public comments. Okay, seeing none. Item D on the agenda, this is something new proposing this month, just as another way, a consent agenda, just as another way to streamline the meetings. That way, if we need to spend more time on more substantive issues, at any point in the consideration of the consent agenda, any item can be pulled off for any reason by any trustee. We take a separate discussion and separate vote on the particular issue. But for, like I said, for the most part of the things, well, everything that's listed in the consent agenda for this month are the routine items that we normally discussed. If in the future George or Art or Connie wanted to move their reports into the consent agenda or minutes or anything like that, we can do that as well. So, at this point in time, is there anybody that wanted to move any items currently listed on the consent agenda off?
I just had one question about the bills.
Yep. So, did you want to move that off or you just wanted to ask the question?
I can ask it now.
Okay.
I just have a question. I guess we got a very large walk-in freezer.
Mm-hmm.
And we're paying 250 a month to store it somewhere. Is there anywhere we can store it? Here in one of the...
We can find out. We moved it. We needed a place because it was donated to us. But I, there are issue, we'll double check, but there are issues with the mechanical equipment, that it has to be, I think there's temperature requirements as far as it being stored, but we'll, we'll look to see if there's a cheaper way.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we didn't have to do that till we move to the other building.
No, we, no, it's a good question, and we were looking for other, more economic solutions, but so far, we haven't found them, but we'll revisit that. It's a good, good question.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Kenley?
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have item E, discussion and potential action on approval of minutes. We have the regular board meeting minutes from April 23rd. Any comments or questions about the minutes?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes was made by Trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Kenley. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a very special presentation tonight, gonna be handled by Clerk George Bussie for the Heart of a Marine Foundation. Clerk Bussie.
All right, resolution 2018-4, Heart of the Marine Celebration Day, May 21st, 2018. Whereas, the Heart of Marine Foundation was established by Roy and Georgette Frank in 2005 in the memory and spirit of their son, Marine Lance Corporal Philip Frank, who died in the defense of his nation while in combat in Iraq. Whereas, the Heart of Marine Foundation has for 13 years served veterans and their families in all branches of the military by resolutely assisting those in need. And whereas, the Heart of Marine Foundation has had a profound impact on meeting the needs of these often forgotten soldiers, sailors, and airmen, who selfishly put themselves in the way of danger and have sacrificed much to preserve the freedom and security of all Ameri, that all Americans are blessed to enjoy. And whereas, the Foundation's accomplishments in serving military men and women in need has been broad and deep and includes equipping dozens of healthcare facilities with computers and software to aid in the treatment of traumatic injuries, providing thousands of canes to crippled veterans, distributing new clothing to needy veterans and their families, contributing funds to upgrade and create living quarters for homeless veterans, and providing funds to support the morale of struggling veterans, their caregivers, and their families. And whereas, the Heart of Marine Foundation created and supported the Lance Corporal Philip E. Frank Fifth Third Bank Memorial Scholarship that provided over 44,000 in scholarships to young men and women who exhibited the spirit of Lance Corporal Frank and the Foundation, which was honor, patriotism, loyalty, respect, and concern for others. And whereas, the Heart of a Marine Foundation has reflected the best of America and the American spirit of hard work, selfishness, selflessness, and dedication to everything honorable. And whereas, George and Georgette Frank have committed immeasurable time, energy, and dedication to this unparalleled endeavor and have been essential to its success and tremendous positive impact on the lives of our military members, and that they are now, after more than a decade of service, retiring and closing the Foundation. Now therefore, Supervisor Michael Sweeney and the Elk Grove Township Board do hereby proclaim, May 21st, 2018, is the Roy and Georgette Frank and the Heart of the Marine Foundation Celebration Day, in recognition of their 13 years of dedicated compassionate support of our country's veterans and families in need. May they all be, may they be an example to all of us, dated this 21st day of May, 2018. I want to say too, as a personal point of view, after 30 years in the Navy and having, having spent a tremendous amount of time with what I consider a large number of dedicated, selfless individuals, this was a fantastic endeavor by the Frank family and all those of you that worked with them, and I think the impact is something that will carry on for years and hopefully, like I said, is an example for others.
Thank you so very much.
(applause)
(inaudible)
Would you like to say what you do?
I would just like to thank everybody associated with the Elk Grove Village Township. Thank you, Mike, and trustees, for this incredible honor. It was a privilege, I'm gonna start crying, it was a privilege to work, it wasn't even work, it was a privilege to be associated with Roy and Georgette Frank and to be a part of the 13 years that we had with so many of our veterans and active-duty military. When you were reading the list of what we've done, I'm like, wow, that was pretty good, we did well. But we did do well, and we did it with, always with Phil in mind and keeping his memory, honor, and spirit. He always believed that the men and women of the Armed Forces were his brothers and sisters in arms, so we saluted every Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, Merchant Marines, the OWs, MIAs, they were always in our heart, and there wasn't anything that we wouldn't do for any one of them. And we thank you so very much for this honor. I will make sure that Roy and Georgette know of this right away, I will take a picture and send it to them, but also make sure that they probably have this in their new home in New Jersey. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And Barbara, let me shake your hand, I, all the trustees, I know, but thank you.
Thank you very much. And anybody who's a veteran, is there a veteran in the home? Thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Barbara.
Navy.
Navy, thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight, Barbara, we appreciate it.
So, we only let Navy guys be on the floor.
Yeah, it's a smart, smart thing. Thank you for putting that together, George. Okay, reports, the assessor, Connie.
You have my written report. We are through with our appeals with the county assessor at this point in time. To reiterate one point, we have been informed that more than likely, the second installment tax bill will be late because of the considerable number of appeals that have gone through the assessor's office and then to the Board of Review. So, because of that, you can look for a later tax bill, but again, due and payable 30 days from the time that you receive it. Also, met with Mr. Piak and Supervisor Sweeney to discuss the digitization of the files of the assessor's office, and that is something that we have started as a project, which will be rather daunting because we have over 33,000 files. So, right now, staff is purging the files of anything that's unnecessary, getting them in a proper and consistent order, so that when they're scanned, they can be put in folders that not only have the PIN number, but the actual mailing address of the property. I'll be meeting tomorrow with the gentleman, who we lovingly refer to as Pete, and James Wrenz, to sit in on their discussion on how to have these programs meshed, so that James can come up with a format that will allow us to do this digitization. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Connie. Clerk's report, Bussie, George Bussie.
I have no form, I have no, no verbal report. The written report contains a comment on a FOIA, and that's it.
Okay, all right. Any questions for George? Okay, Highway Department, Art.
I really have nothing else to add to the report, other than we're really excited about the first major reconstruction project in Elk Grove Township in a number of years. I don't know, is there any questions on that?
No, I, I don't have a question, I have a comment. This has been a long time coming, I, I don't know the last time we've had a, if ever, we've had a, basically, a capital improvement program that covers the entire Highway Department, managing all roads, that's gonna be done to, basically, handle a long-term management of the roads, so that they're always in good repair. Art's been working very hard with Mark Toll, our engineer, and I'm excited to see this come to fruition. I mean, he's been working hard on this for a couple of years, making sure that all his ducks are in a row, so that we know exactly what needs to be done on what roads, from just a resurfacing to a complete grind down and rebuild. So, you know, I would encourage everybody on this board, if you get a chance to sit down with Art and look at all the plans that they've laid out, it's quite impressive. And Art, you're to be commended on the hard work.
How much of our unincorporated area will it be?
Well, we're basically working on our residential areas. What we're planning on doing is, a lot of areas have major failures in three, four years, so totally reconstructing it. And we are getting input from residents and other, you know, people every day, so we're adding that in, and Mark's been looking at this with the engineers.
But it includes the whole system.
Yes.
Okay, so the area I ride my bike on, Martha, where it's caved in, will include that?
It includes, it includes the entire system.
It'd be Lincoln, Martha, subdivision, Afetani, their center, the Brandecker Estates for Paulo.
Very good.
Not doing much on Stanley Street, though.
No, no, it'll be gone soon, I think. No, very good, but yeah, I would encourage you, and if you want, the documents that, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's been a lot of work put in, so I would encourage you to get together with Art. Any questions for Art? All right, can I have a motion to accept the reports as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ingraffia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. No correspondence, no old business, first order of new business. I'm excited to have our attorneys out to talk about the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the township and Elk Grove Village for the property swap, the last piece of the consolidation puzzle as far as buildings go. So, I wanted to turn that over to them, both David and Jason, to discuss, just identify what these documents are, and then be available here to answer any questions, so.
Thank you very mo, thank you very much. So, as this board sort of knows, we have been, like Mike says, working on this intergovernmental agreement for quite some time now, for the exchange of this, of, sorry, of Scholmsford for Landmeyer. And so, what you have in front of you, I believe, are two sets of documents, and I'll explain why there's two of them. But globally, what you have in front of you is the ordinance that's authorizing the supervisor and the clerk to sign and execute the intergovernmental agreement that's been prepared and negotiated with the village of Elk Grove. And so, the ordinance is there, and attached to it is the actual intergovernmental agreement. And as, as the board knows, the board has to vote on and give the authority to the supervisor to sign and to do that, to effectuate this intergovernmental agreement. The reason why I believe that there's two, there is a slight difference that occurred that came to our knowledge, I believe, at 6 o'clock on Thursday from the village. There is a whereas clause, it's the 10th one in the ordinance and the ninth one in the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement, that addresses the authority of the village to transfer the property. And what was previously in there was a reference to the Illinois Municipal Code, but believe it or not, the village of Elk Grove has its home rule powers and has the ability to pass an ordinance 24 years ago, to pass it without public hearing, as long as there's a three-quarters vote of the village board. And so, the village brought that to our attention at about 5 o'clock, or actually, it was Friday morning. And so, the difference between the two versions is, the old one has the municipal code reference, which is no longer applicable. The new one, that will have executed, is subject to your approval, will have reference to the, the village ordinance, which gives the, the Elk Grove Village Board the authority to enter into the C, IGA on the village's behalf. So, we're here to answer any questions. One thing we did do, just so the board knows, on Friday, we got on, on the horn with the title insurance company to ensure that the modification that's reflected in the most recent would be okay, that we would get sufficient title, once this was effectuated and they confirmed that they would issue title, that it would be sufficient for their purposes. So, from the township's perspective, the most recent version is what is ready to be signed, and subject to the board's approval of it and the supervisor and clerk's signature of it, the Elk Grove Village Board will vote on it and sign it tomorrow, which will make the intergovernmental agreement effective between the village and the township, and will effectuate, will start in the process of the exchange. The closing date, I believe, I could be wrong, it's, it's, it's set to be exchanged at the latest, I don't think there's a closing date set, it's subject to the parties' mutual agreement. Basically, comes down to when the parties are available, when they're ready to leave, and when we're ready to go there. So, I have David here, he's actually been taking more of the laboring ore with the documentation, so if there's any specific questions that the board members might have, we're happy to answer them.
That'll open it up. To the board for any questions.
I apologize for the length, but that's sort of what happens when you're exchanging property and you need a lot of approval, so.
It's been a lot of hard work, I know, it's been a lot of back and forth, so. Any, any questions? Seeing none, if I can have a motion to approve ordinance 20...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for something, I'm sorry. On page two of the ordinance.
Yes.
Whereas, following the closing, the real estate property exchange, buy-in between the township and the village, the village will need to remain in the possession of the property up until February 1st, 2019. So, is that the drop-dead date, or, 'cause I, I...
That is.
Okay.
So, so it's, it's very likely from our discussions that the exchange, the move-in is gonna be, happen before that. The village wants to, to get out of Landmeyer's as quickly as they can, so that's the end date. If for some reason, the, they hold over, there, we have some money that will be put in escrow to cover, shall we say, the holdover amount that we would have to pay here to stay here for another month or two. We don't anticipate that, but we built in some protections in the event it goes after February 1st.
Are we able to stay? They can't throw us out? Are we able, do we have that?
We have a holdover.
We would have to pay, around with a little surcharge, but...
At least here, it doesn't expire till the end of June, and if we, we wouldn't actually be holding over until, until after that.
It would cover our rent, it would cover our rent here.
2019.
Okay, that covers it.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, couldn't hear what you said, if you speak up.
The lease here doesn't expire until...
Step up to the microphone.
Jason said, the village will retain its property until, as late as February 1st, 2019. The township's lease here technically expires until June 30th of 2019, although they can terminate sooner than that if they want to.
All right, so it's not the same date, not same end date for both?
Correct.
Okay.
So, there are some protections, that we won't be a holdover.
It would be, it would cover our rent.
Yes, correct. But again, from all intents and, for all our discussions, it looks like they want to vacate a lot earlier than February 1st of 2019.
Right.
We'll see.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2018-03, authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement by and between the village of Elk Grove and the township of Elk Grove for the transfer of real estate, the associated post-closing occupancy agreement with the village of Elk Grove, and the deed to transfer the township property to Elk Grove Village? That's a mouthful. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingraffia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Kenley.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Ordinance is approved. All right, under new business, proposed revision to add December 31st to resolution 2017-17, closing dates for 2018. Trustee Saturn, you requested this agenda item, so I will give you the floor.
Okay, when we passed this resolution, the days aren't on there, just the dates, so I didn't realize the 31st is a Monday, and then it's New Year's Day. So, I would like to add that to the closing. Last year, I was here, happened to be here the day after Christmas, which Christmas was on a Sunday, and we didn't give them Monday off, and so when I was looking at these dates, I just would like to add that, to have the 31st off, that just makes sense to me, because they have the first off.
You'd like to add the 31st as an additional day off?
Yes, yes.
Do we have a listing of the...
We do, it was sent to you, I don't remember, I don't know if it's in the board packet.
It's not, it's not in the packet.
No, it's not.
Was it, was it sent?
It was email.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
No, I, yeah, I...
I mean, we had it when we voted on it, but obviously, that was a long time ago.
We had it in October. It was approved last October, the closing dates for 2018, we'll have it on the agenda again for 2019, the, the calendar year in October. My only thought was, I mean, I don't mind discussing dates, but I mean, it's been seven months, I would just say, you know, let's wait till October, we still have a couple months to discuss the New Year's Eve of this year, we could do it all then, and then we can discuss all the dates. I mean, I think it's been a long time since we discussed, you know, the rhyme or reason for days off, days on, you know, whatever the case is. There are some days that I've, you know, we've been busy with other things, there are some days that I'd like to see removed from the days-off calendar, but I think it's a good thing to revisit it. I just say that we, we can do that all at once in October, and if we do decide to take December 31st off, or put it back on the days-off calendar, we can do it all then. That's kind of my thought.
I'm talking about this year's.
No, so am I.
Okay, okay.
So am I. This, when we discuss 2019 in October, we can still have the same conversation about December 31st of this year there as well, but then, like I said, it, it opens us up to a whole conver, we can, we can talk about all the dates, whether or not December 31st is, you know, a New Year's Eve is a day we should be closed, whether it's not, we can discuss all the dates, because we do still, we, we, I don't know the last time, I mean, it certainly wasn't discussed since I've been here in September 2005, so I don't know the last time the rhyme or reason of these dates was discussed, so.
So, you, you would be comfortable with the, the dates through October, then in October, when you talk about 19, you'd look at the end of 18 as well?
Right.
So, you'll put it on the agenda for October?
Yep. Yep, and I would just, just remind us, we'll, Paul will make a note, but like I said, then we can discuss all of them, and then that still gives, if we do close on December 31st, that still gives plenty of notice to the staff, if that would be, if that would be okay with everybody.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, tuition reimbursement programs, Trustee Saturn, I will turn the floor over to you. You asked to have this added to the agenda.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One of them is, the policy we have right now is just for GA, but you had mentioned you wanted to have it for the rest of the township.
Outside of highway and assessor.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, are there other government entities that use taxpayer money to do tuition reimbursement?
Yes.
I have a really hard time with using taxpayer money to do tuition reimbursement.
Well, it's tuition assistance, you know, I, you know, there is, sometimes always a catalyst for the things you do, it just so happened that I've been thinking about doing something along the lines of professional development for staff. Other things have taken priority in my attention, just so happened to be that Stephanie was going back for her masters, and that ended up being the catalyst in general assistance. You know, I do want to provide some opportunity for some professional development for the rest of the staff, I think it's a good thing. One of the reasons I wanted to bring an administrator on was to enhance the professionalism of the staff, and that's what I'm looking to do. I think there's good things from taking, you know, Microsoft Office classes to a social worker, working on a master's in social work. The assessor's office, to Connie's credit, has, pays to have her deputies take classes to get their CIAO, so this is nothing new, I mean, the assessor's office has been doing it.
No, I have no problem with professional development, I just don't know that we should be paying for someone to get their masters with taxpayer money.
Well, I guess I just don't understand the difference between what this is, other professional development, and then what Connie's doing.
Well, I mean, they have to have that certification.
No, they don't.
Okay.
Connie, is that's correct, your deputies are not required to have that?
The deputies are not required to have it, only the elected official.
Right. So, now, you do that because it's, it enhances the professionalism.
Reason, because we are dealing with technical issues that the staff needs to be fully educated to explain to a taxpayer. The other thing is, from a management perspective, from my perspective, if something should happen to me, there is someone in that office who can immediately become assessor on, at least a temporary basis. So, it was a management decision that my senior deputy become a CIAO, and conversely, no one has a crystal ball, so one does not know, I mean, something happens to me, something could happen to Lori, I'm gonna have backup, and that's part of, you know, making your lives a little easier, that you're not gonna be hunting around for an assessor.
Are you talking about a designated survivor?
Yes, pretty much.
Getting to their place.
They, there's such a legacy that I leave to them, which would be my desk, but other than that, but it is the situation that, I have seen this happen frequently in other jurisdictions, where they have not embraced having a professional staff, and then when something happens to the assessor, unfortunately, it falls to the trustees to beg, borrow, and steal somebody who can go out and get a CIAO.
How long does that take?
Right now, we're looking at four mandatory exam classes, and I know that when I was asked to run, that was something I did out of my own pocket, so that I would be qualified to run. Conversely, if somebody is going to rerun for that position, you have a mandatory Conversely, if somebody is going to rerun to that position, you have a mandatory requirement of continuing education. But ours is by statute.
So I have a question. How much can someone get reimbursed? Like for their whole master's degree?
It's not, tuition, reimbursement was a poor choice of words. It's tuition assistance. So we're assisting on part of what they would be paying out of pocket. I mean, it's, the caps are set there. It would be at the discretion, as saying general assistance, it would be at my discretion how much would be there, or how much could be approved. The master's degree is so long, you know, only so many courses versus, you know, even taking individual classes. So I would know that ahead of time. But I guess it would depend on if it's class by class or a whole program. I couldn't tell you, couldn't give you an example of every instance, but I mean, it's a finite amount of courses in a program, but that would be up to my discretion. I wouldn't see it going anymore. And mind you, it's only assistance, they only get the assistance if they perform well in the class, with a top grade. Or they pass, you know, it's a pass/fail, they get a partial assistance. So, I mean, it, it does give, in this case, myself, some flexibility, some discretion in that. But I wouldn't see it going over $10,000. But then you look at the asset that you've created over time, the education that you've given someone, the professional development, the ability to do their job better, and respond to circumstances in a more professional and educated way, I see that there's a significant payoff.
Okay. My other concern is that the policy says they only have to work here one year after they're done with this. I mean, people I've talked to, it's usually three to five years. So that's not a bad deal to get this assistance, and then you only have to stay one more year.
Well, so this is general assistance. Obviously, there's always, when you create a new, I don't know what Connie's policy says, this is a new policy created in general assistance. So over time, there, I anticipate being tweaks. I think it's important for us to understand it, to not conflate the two. This doesn't apply to the general administration, the rest of the township employees outside of general assistance, highway, and the assessor's office. So when I'm talking about proposing something to the board, this is going to be a, a proposed policy that the board would discuss and vote on. So I think, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily productive to get into the what-ifs of a proposal that hasn't even been presented yet.
That's fine. I'm just saying the one for GA said one year, which I thought was a short amount of time. But when we vote on the one for the other parts of the township, will that become part of the employee handbook?
Of course. Yeah. Any policy that regarding benefits would be tied to the employee handbook. And then the, the board would vote on, like I said, things can be added, things can be removed, just like in general assistance. This idea, I, you know, when you're creating a new policy, we've revised policy before. You don't get everything right, right out of the gate. Sometimes there's things that you tweak as you go down the line. I don't think it's a bad suggestion that you require somebody stay three years, five years, whatever the case might be. I'm saying that was our, that was my first, you know, it was the first policy. And of course, I think I'm always open to tweaking that particular policy, as always. I've invited members of this board on multiple occasions to talk to me, meet with me, call me, to discuss their concerns. I'm always happy to take suggestions. So I think that's a good suggestion, and that could change over time. It just happened to be that the first draft of this policy that was implemented in general assistance just happened to have that one-year caveat.
Okay. I just had one other question.
Yep.
On the invoice for Stephanie and GA with the $3,500 tuition assistance. We got the grades, but there's nothing there that shows the bill for the courses.
We can get that for you.
Because I think that's something we should see before we approve that next time.
That's perfectly reasonable. We can get that for you.
Okay. And it's, I know the policy said grade, they had to get an A, and some of these just say credit, so they, is that like-
That's all explained in the policy. If it's a pass/fail, then, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion about this topic? All right. Moving forward. Okay. So you have, George, you want to discuss this? I'll turn this over.
I've been working on, for some time now, a procedure for establishing regular board meeting agenda items, just because we've had, we've had some inconsistency in terms of how we do this, and I just want to make it simple for myself and for the administrator and deputy clerk. And I did some, look, I did some work through Paul and on my own with Palatine, Wheeling, I talked to someone from Maine Township, and, and also with a couple of the villages, and came up with a procedure for, a procedure for establishing the regular board meeting agendas. And it basically, it consists of the following, is that, one, there's a standard agenda which would be put in place, which contains all the standard items that are included in a board, and the things that just automatically need to be considered. And also then those items which, which, which are being addressed at that time, a standard agenda. And that has to be, come out and be published 48 hours prior to the meeting as the State of Illinois Open Meetings Act requires. Now, on the Tuesday before is when I'd like to have the administrator come out with the approved, that's the clerk, or in my absence, the deputy clerks, approved agenda. And that draft would go out on Tuesday evening. Any elected official may call for a placement of an additional item on the agenda, and that would have to be received by Wednesday, the close of business on Wednesday. The items, you just need to, it needs to be a titled item, short, concise, clear, and then a short explanation in terms of what, what, what the issue is, so that the other board members, when they receive this, will be able to know what we're discussing and what we're moving forward on. And people can prepare themselves a little bit. I think it makes for, for an efficient meeting. The administrator then will, will take this and change the agenda. The draft agenda then would become a, a final agenda, which will be emailed on Thursday prior to the regular board meeting. Now, that's the standard procedure. If there's an emergency, and, and two board members feel that something has to be put on to the agenda, that can be added, not later than 3 o'clock on Friday, prior to the regular board meeting. And that would be, that should not be, that should be a special situation, when two board members decide something needs to be on there. And as long as that gets in by 3 o'clock, and it's sent to both myself and the township, the deputy township clerk, so that if one of us doesn't catch it, the other one hopefully will, then that will be added to the agenda as well, too. And then it gives us time to get that out 48 hours prior to the meeting. The only other thing that I, and that's pretty standard, that's a pretty standard procedure for a lot of different boards, in terms of how their agendas go. The only other thing I added here, and this was simply because we have people miss meetings, like Dale's gone today, that if an agenda item is new and is not dealing with a standard issue, then I had suggested there may be two readings of the item at two separate regular board meetings before it's approved. At the first meeting, or the first reading, a majority of the board must vote for the primary approval of the item for it to move to the second meeting. And a majority of the board must then vote for approval item after the second reading for it to receive final approval. However, if at the first meeting, you have a supermajority of the board, four out of five members, with one maybe missing, then it could be, it could be approved at the first meeting. Basically, what we're saying is if it's a three-to-two vote, it will need to come back and be considered again, or if it's a, or if it's a, well, obviously if it's a two-to-two vote, or if it's, or if somebody abstains, you're basically bringing it back, and the person who missed gets to hear it, gets to discuss it.
Three-to-two?
No, there wouldn't be. It'd be four, it'd be two-to-two. Two-to-two, or two, or two-to-one.
I'm muddled enough. Confuse me. Yes, okay.
Two-to-one or three-to-two, yeah.
Yeah. Well, not three-to-two, because you'd have someone missing. Or, or, no, it would be, it would be three-to-two.
Got a supermajority.
Yeah, it would be three-to-two, too. Yeah. I'm sorry. It would be three-to-two. It would come back, be looked at a second time.
Huh?
It would be brought back and looked at, it'd be considered-
If you have, if you have a three-
If it passes, but you don't get four votes on the first reading, it has to come back for a second reading.
If it's not a supermajority.
Okay. A supermajority, why do we need a supermajority?
No, it's not a supermajority. It might not necessarily be a supermajority. It could, it has to get four votes. It has to get, it has to get four votes to bypass the second reading.
What has, what has to get four votes? Specify.
A motion on a non-standard item. So anything that's not in these normal, like, wouldn't be listed, like under, like minutes or bills, or anything like that.
So what you're saying is if everyone's here, and you've got five people here, and it's a three-to-two vote, it'll come back, it'll come back for a second reading. If somebody's missing, and it, and you get a three-to-two vote, it'll still come back for a, for a, for a, for a second reading.
I think we're-
Or if it's two-to-one vote.
How do you get, if somebody's missing, how do you get a three-to-two vote?
No, it doesn't matter if someone's missing. Someone, everyone can be here, and it still comes back.
But it needs a supermajority.
I think it just-
To not come back.
To not come back.
I think we need to simplify it, and this needs to be four. If it gets four votes on first reading-
What would be considered? Sue Ellen told me that, just now in passing, that, that the calendar issue would be, I don't see that as being something odd. It's a calendar issue.
I thought you meant something added, no?
No. This is, this is a non, I mean, that would be a standard issue, the calendar.
Give us an example of a non-standard issue.
Revisit the calendar, but it'd be a standard issue.
Honestly, it would be, essentially, we can change the language on, I mean, essentially be anything listed under new business. We shouldn't, I guess that terminology shouldn't be standard.
Yeah, we could do it. I mean, you can do it that way, if you want to simplify it, yeah.
It should be anything listed under new business. What's that?
Nobody has seen before.
Right. It's a, yeah, it's a new item. Anything listed under new business would be subject to a first reading. I think we simplify it by saying, if it passes, then it moves to a second reading, and then, you know, it requires a second reading to be approved. And instead of that supermajority, I would say that it should have four votes to automatically bypass a second reading. That way, if you have, you know, it is a supermajority, but I think, you know, if you start saying, well, I mean, a three-to-one could be a supermajority, and I don't know if you want, I mean, I don't know. I just think four votes shows, shows that it has significant support. I mean, that's my suggestion.
So at the, after the second reading, if it was three-to-two, it's passed?
It was passed.
But it gives, it gives, like I said, like George said, folks that, you know, can't participate in the conversation, the, the first day for vacations, illness, whatever the case might be, it gives them an opportunity to go back and get up to speed on the issue, and potentially take part on it at the second reading if it doesn't, you know, pass with four votes at the first reading.
So I'll go back to all, all new business items, and with four votes, it doesn't have to go to a second reading. Without four votes, it does.
As far as the consent agenda is concerned, the consent agenda could include the discussion and action or approval of the minutes, authorization for bills, and the reports, any, any of the reports.
Those would make the most sense to me, yes.
Okay. Just out of, out of curiosity then-
Right.
Why, why, why was the board, the regular board meeting not on the consent agenda this time?
The minutes.
Oh, the minutes. I'm sorry, the minutes. Thank you.
That, I'll turn, I, George, the clerk wanted them separate.
Yes, I asked for them separate, because I think that that, I want to be able to, this is what the board is saying happened at that meeting. I want to make sure that, that you look at that separately and say yes.
Okay. And the reports are separate, too?
Except for mine. I, I think my report, I put my report in the consent agenda, it's the standard reports. I'll add a memo if there's something unique that comes up, but it, but just, I happen to disagree with George, because I think one, one board member could pull it off the consent agenda, so I give that's enough flexibility to say I have an issue with the minutes.
Yeah, I would agree.
Either way is good.
So I don't, I mean, I don't mind if he wants to leave it off, but I, I put my report in there just because it's, it's routine, it's, it's primarily the financials, the general assistance report, so I figure if there are specific questions, folks can get in touch with me prior to the meeting, or pull it out of the consent agenda. And the only other thing that I would add to the, the procedure that George presented here, was I really, in the, after the list of the standard agenda items, that next, next paragraph there says the agenda item should be titled in a short, clear, concise manner. All agenda items should, items shall include a short explanation of the item and its purpose, and any significant supplemental documents, or material that the board member plans to reference in contact, connection with the item. The only thing that I would add on there is that if that's not presented, it doesn't get added to the agenda.
That would be presented in writing.
Yes. I don't think, I think the board member should have a chance to prepare for an item that's coming before them. To list an agenda item without giving explanation as to its purpose, or what you'll be presenting or asking, is unprofessional, and it's unrealistic to believe that we can prepare for an agenda item that we know nothing about.
So basically, what we would say is if it, if that is not received, it's not put on the agenda.
That's correct.
By, by the Thursday date.
So you want to review the proposed changes?
Yeah, the, it's as stands, but we would be changing in the paragraph after the standing items, we would say that if the additional, the information required for additional items is not provided by the close of business on Thursday, it will not be added to the agenda. And then, on the last paragraph, in terms of the first and second readings, this will, this will relate, this will relate to all new business items, and for an item not to go to a second reading, it will require a four-vote vote.
Who decides if the explanation and the supplemental documents are acceptable?
That'll be the clerk, the clerk or the deputy clerk if I'm not available.
So if they are, do not feel what you give is acceptable?
I will go back, we will go back to the provider, to the person requesting it.
But that will be in writing?
Yes.
It'll be in writing. It can be presented to, it can be included in the board-
It'd be an email, but I mean-
Well, that's writing.
Yeah.
Electronic writing.
So additional discussion? All right. With those proposed changes, is there a motion to accept this establishment of these procedures? I think this is long overdue, so I'm going to make the motion to accept these procedures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Graffia. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn?
Aye.
Trustee Graffia?
Yes.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney?
Aye.
Okay. Procedures are approved. Okay. No executive session matters. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Graffia.